Good evening. The time is now 7:00 p.m. I'd like to ask that the Plainfield Board of Selectment amended. This is an amended meeting minutes, but we have a meeting for January 23rd, 7 o'clock. Ask if you please rise for the pleasure legions.
Pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, to the Republic, which stands by your God, indivisible, and liberating, universal, and eternal.
Thank you. Now we'll start off with roll call.
Art, get it.
Scott, pardon?
The meeting minutes for the Board of Select meeting from January 9th, 2023.
No correction. I saw this on item two. It would be inverted. I made the motion to be seconded. I know I wasn't here, but I believe we need to amend the name of this Sugarman, David Sugarman.
Got it. So there's an amendment request for the actual vote, which was on item two. We'll just swap those names between myself and Art. And the other section would be on item one, to change that from Scott to David. Anything else? Hearing not entertain a motion to approve with amendments.
Make a motion to approve the meeting minutes for January 9th, 2023. Make amendments.
Motion on the table. I will second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right. Item C is public comment. Does anybody from the public wish to address the Board of Selectment at this time? If so, please come to the microphone and use your first and last name. Okay. Hearing none, we go into old business, which we have none, and then go to item F, which is new business. Before we get jump into new business, I'm going to ask if we entertain a motion to add item number six, which is to discuss and appoint Shaw Roberts to the housing authority.
Make a motion to add item six to the agenda.
I'll second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. So item number one, consider an act on tax refunds as requested by the tax collector totaling $68.62 for Thomas J. Hall and Darlene M. Hall.
Make a motion to approve the tax refund, $68.62. I'll second.
Motion's been made in a second. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Item number two, discuss an act on bypass procurement policy for the Lions Park playground equipment through Creative Recreation. This item on there, and I can always get backup if I need it, but this is the only company that would serve that particular item that we're looking to go forward with. That's why we're looking for procurement policy to bypass.
Hey, I had two questions.
Sure.
On the purchase order. The Miracle Land's playground, that one was $171,400. And on the next case, the proposal is $171,440. It's a $40 difference.
So you're talking about the first line in that?
Yeah. This here is $171,400, and on that's $171,440.
Okay. So we have to make an amendment then to the purchase order?
It should be $440.
Should be $440 because that's what's in the package. Okay. So there are some reductions in costs. You have another question on that?
Yeah, I have a question about the, yeah, the reduction of $24,000 deducted from factory installation.
We plan on doing a different way of doing the installation. So instead of the factory coming to do the work, we do have some ideas about having volunteers come in to do it. It's been done in the past, so it would save us about $24,000.
Okay. So the second item is factory authorized installation, the $60,000. Does that come off? They're just taking $24,000 off of that $60,000?
Correct.
Can I have the rectorrectory answer that?
So they still want to be involved or what does?
Yeah, so essentially you can have a community day where, you know, you could volunteer to assemble the actual playground, but they'll still be involved like every step of the way. So that $24,000 just comes off of the total because we're going to help.
Correct. So for the record, that was rectorrector Mark Simmons. So if I'm correct by saying that the actual total should be $169,160 because you're adding the $40,000 in?
$120.
Well, it says $120, but you're $40,000 difference, aren't you? Yeah, so it should be $169,160. $160.
Yeah.
Got it. So in a motion, if you are okay with it, it would be entertaining a motion for approval of that Creative Recreation Purchase Order, and the total would be $169,160.
I'll make a motion to bypass the procurement policy for Lions Park playground equipment through Creative Recreation for $169,160. I'll second.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you for that. Item number three, discuss an act on bypassing procurement policy for engineering with Archer Survey and KWP Associates.
Let me ask you, did we change procurement policy?
To be over $10,000.
Over $10,000, yes. I just wanted to make sure it was up front. I'll make a motion to bypass procurement policy for hiring engineer, Archer Survey, KWP Associates, $92,000.
Okay. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And item number four, to discuss an act on a review of the ARPA Business Grant applications. So I want to say thank you to everybody that applied. This is a very popular program, obviously, and thank you for coming out. I know it was very difficult to go through some of the roads tonight, but I want to thank you for coming out. I will turn this over at this point over to Jordan Lumpkins, who helped to put the program together, not once but twice, because originally it was going to be revolving loan fund. We couldn't do that properly. So there are some discussion items on here first, so how we make, entertain motions on that as well. But to follow up, just say thank you for everybody who applied and coming out tonight. Just in case we had any questions or you wanted to have any comments, this will be your time. So appreciate that.
All right. So we ended up with 21 applications to the program totaling $436,100 of requests. A loss demonstrated by businesses was around $900,000, and today I'm presenting 11 applications recommended by the Economic Development Commission totaling $246,100. As you know, the program was only funded up to $250,000, but we did additionally approve $100,000 for a different housing hardship program. So I'm asking today that you consider transferring that $100,000 into this program so that we can serve businesses who are in covered, join this grant. So that's the first request. Do you have any questions?
I think it's appropriate. We didn't really have anybody that came forward to request pretty modifications for homes under the hardship program, so I think this would be best served as you have obviously demonstrated with the information about all the applicants that came forward. We'll get to the other ones later on because there is a section now there with.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah. We even had an applicant coming from Norwich. But yes, I think that would be appropriate to make the motions to go forward with modifying the request from the recovery grant monies from ARPA from a housing hardship, the $100,000 David designated for that, to move it over to a resolution to authorize the ARPA monies to be put into the recovery program for businesses. We have to make a proper motion for that. And if you have it in your packet there, a list, there's three steps we're going to go through. That would be the first step to authorize a motion to move the March 24th, 2022 resolution authorizing the expense of the ARPA funds to be amended. So you have it in the packet, amended section. It's probably the second and third pages of the packet you have in your hand, talking about the resolutions. So we just want to modify that resolution as written, and that would cover us to move that $100,000 into this program.
Someone who already did this round, on the EDC, hopefully next one, to finish out the applications on.
Is that you going to do that, go down, or are we going to go to what we think first? First. Any discussion? Any questions? No. Okay. So we've entertained a motion this time to move the March 24th, 2022 resolution authorizing expense of ARPA funds to be amended as written.
I'll make that motion.
All right. Thank you. Thank you, Scott. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
So we'll look forward to the next round.
All right. Perfect. Thank you very much. So then the next part is to, we have 11 applications recommended by the Economic Development Commission. Anybody in, anyone else who's there for review of those? So you'll see who we have represented from all of the applicants, to the exception of Tap Truck, not you, who's way out of business trip. The two notes before you ask any questions of them is there was a contingency for La Cantina, just in need to receive municipal approval for doing any alterations. That kind of goes with all of that, but EDC specifically requested that humility. And then Tap Truck, originally it was contingent on payment for home occupation permit. They actually did that today, so you can cross that out.
Okay.
So if you want to ask questions, I'm sure you can have your answer.
Do you have any questions at this point? I have a couple of comments for all the applicants. I know it's difficult and times are very tough, and that's why the federal government came forward with a program like this. And I think it was very helpful for the town to be able to translate that into helping the small businesses, helping the nonprofits, and I think it's something that we can hopefully look forward to in the future, but for right now, this is the monies that we have, and I do appreciate the fact that you were interested enough to put the application in, to work with Jordan, to work with the EDC, and hoping that it helps to your businesses to be able to flourish further. So that's my only comment really for that. So we can do this all in one motion, and you can entertain, I will entertain a motion to move the following ARPA Small Business Economy Recovery Grant applications be approved with the contingencies, and applications be received for final approval by the town attorney, and all project activities follow municipal, state, and federal guidelines. And I'll read out each one as they go. American Legion Ambulance, $10,000. Enchanted Jewelry, $25,000. Haber Inn, $25,000. Hope Lodge, $25,000. La Cantina, again with that contingency to receive municipal approval, $25,000. Marie's Fitness, $15,700. Matthews Catering, $25,000. On the Spot Catering, $24,400. Plainfield Business Association, $25,000. Plainfield Mission Football Association, $25,000. And Tap Truck, New England, $25,000.
I'm just correct.
Yep.
On the Spot Catering was a $24,000.
$20,400. Yep. Okay.
Would you like that motion?
All right, with a motion.
Second.
Scott, second. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
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 And then I'm just addressed. So the next step is we're going to send this funnel list into the town attorney. He'll just get the funnel close up. I'll start working on contract. You should hear from him in a couple of weeks. Thank you, everyone. Goodbye, and I really appreciate it. And then last is just denied. So it's just three applications that either did not, they were not looked in in town, didn't complete the application, or they were unresponsive. So I would just write deny them. I'll contact them, let them know, and we'll look at that.
So this is basically an official letter from the town stating that they were denied?
Yes.
Okay. So we can entertain a motion for moving that following ARPA Small Business Economy Recovery Grant applicants be denied, flourish by Chrissy Mike's Cutson, Dog House Bakery.
So move.
And any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
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 Thank you very much.
Thank you. Item number five, to discuss an act on adding 143, 151 Plainfield Pike Road to the state listed DECD sites for enterprise corridor zone. And approval for the Board of Selectment would allow the first electman an opportunity to write a letter to support the state of Connecticut for the addition. And that's item five. So for support and answering of other questions, we also have with us tonight Mary Ann Chadi, town planner. We also have our tax assessor, Mary Ellen. And if you have any questions, you can always reach out to these two here to ask.
Did this change?
No, the landowner did not reach out to the town. And it's part of the reason why I'm kind of wrestling with it right now. They did ask the question, though, do the town in Plainfield, are they offering any tax incentives? I told them no. My concern was that we have a fairly large parcel which could be used, as we heard, through planning zoning, for up to 100, I'm sorry, 1 million square foot for a warehouse. Usually those come with the caveat that the developers went a little con search and tried to find someone. When they went through the process, I did speak to them initially, and they said they were going to do things on spec, speculation, meaning that at that time, the economy was solid, and they thought they would just build it, and somebody would come forth and say, yeah, I'd love to have it, and there might be a line waiting at the door. Economy has changed. Climate's changed on that. So what we have in front of us now is an issue where that is not being done in spec. They're actually talking to different businesses. There's two major companies that they're talking to right now, and that's why they reached out to me to ask the question, because they're going to be negotiating with those two companies. So Mary Ann had approached and asked about the possibility of changing this over to a enterprise corridor, and therefore enticing to have someone come forward. What it really is, is a five-year plan. Five-year plan, and correct me if I'm wrong in any of this, but the five-year plan basically is not so much like we had for Lowe's, but it's five years, and we would basically receive 60% of tax revenue. By that is a breakdown of, the town gets 20 directly, he gets from the state of Connecticut like 40% of the taxes, and then they don't have to pay the other 40. And that happens for a five-year period. While it's enticing, I'm, like I said, I'm still wrestling with it. I wrestled all weekend trying to think about pros and cons of this. So my thought is really that they need to reach out to us. This is still something that, for the taxpayers, you know, you're looking at it saying, well, you're giving out a tax break. And I just, I don't know, I just don't think it's something that, by my opinion, if I'm going to say right now, it's something I don't think we can do right now. I think those large companies are still going to look at this property. I may be wrong. This is my opinion.
Well, you brought me to the second question. You've got to answer. What would that break look like to them?
What would it be, 80% rate for the properties like Evan said?
Right, right. But you put in here what the value of that property building would be, 59 million assessed at 41. So what would that break look like to them?
It's just a nice, it's hard to really tell what the actual rate will be because a, the building's not built, and you don't have a no rate cap. So I mean, very rough estimates. Very, very rough. $867,000.
Over the five years?
Perfect.
Over here.
And then you break that down to what we can get on the percentage.
I'm sorry. Excuse me. I'm sorry. $693,000.
That's what their, abatement would be. That's what the abatement would be?
That's right. That's.
Because you don't know the exact, oh.
I don't know. It's a very, very.
They can put up to 1 million square foot.
Yeah.
But if they don't, they put less than that, or the type of equipment they put into it, things like that.
Heating, equipment, everything. It's a very robust amount.
Did you try to score the zone? This is one of those things that can go away.
Yeah, it can go away eventually. And Mary Ann, if you wanted to speak to that, it would be helpful.
Mary Ann Chadi, town planner. Just for a little bit of background, this property was initially proposed to be located in the updated enterprise corridor zone when the zone was modified in 2000. At that point in time, the property was zoned residential, which is not permitted for the ECD. Subsequent to that, in 2012, the property was rezoned industrial. So that makes it eligible. It abuts the enterprise corridor zone. It makes sense to include it in the ECD. And I've had contact with three agents representing large companies that are looking for this type of property, and they're interested because it's in an absent prime location. It's right near the highway, it's going to have water, it's going to have sewer, and it's a vacant site right now. It's got the approvals in place. All they need is to file my laws and get a zoning and building permits to put it up. They are looking at three other sites in Massachusetts, which does offer substantial incentives for them, and I urge the board to think favorably about this proposal. Oh, I'm sorry, Art. The enterprise corridor zone is not something that goes away. That's, the only way it would go away is for the state to disband the program. The tax incentives are what go away after five years. You know, even the enterprise corridor zone division of DECD cannot answer that question. So that's an extremely old acronym.
Right. But what, the red areas on this map, current, that's what we have now for the corridor zones.
That map was created for the new 2000. There is a map in there that's signed by the then commissioner, and that's the current ECD map.
Mary Ann, has the Skinnell Corporation reached out to you to say they have someone who's interested if this was passed?
No, they have not. Kyle Roberts, who represents another agency, they have two parties that are interested in this discussion.
Interested in the parcel?
No.
But they didn't state any question about tax incentives?
They did ask, are there any incentives? They're the ones actually that told me that they're also looking at three in Massachusetts, but they like, they prefer this one. And I got a phone call about this property this morning, actually asking if it was any enterprise corridor zone from another agent.
That's the only incentive you can.
That's the only incentive that would be available to them if this property is added to. to.
Because I know we were looking at a different, or whatever it was, more of a margin. Maybe, but if it went down over the years, it's different.
Yeah, this is different. We're going to unload this 10-year program.
It's your biggest fear.
Giving a tax incentive to a large company. You know that, I'll just use, throw a name out there, if you had, like Coca-Cola saying they'd like to utilize the facility, that's great, and they're Fortune 500, and then why are we giving a Fortune 500 company a tax incentive? I know what the end result is, I know the end result is you're filling the warehouse, you are getting jobs, you are getting people from the mid of the area to help utilize all of our businesses in the area. And in five years, you're now getting all the tax break out of it. It's just, it's difficult to just continue to say, it's just continuing our trend of giving a tax break to someone who may not be.
What would you like to add?
Yeah. All right, so what would you like to do? What is your pleasure?
I mean, if they're really hard on you, I'm going to go with taxes.
We could always vote for it or against it, if you want to guess, or you want to make a bet. Scott, to deny or take no action? Take no action. Art, you second?
I'll second.
Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Item number six is to discuss and appoint Cheryl Roberts to the Housing Authority. This is one of those who were catching all of them. So we need to do a proper appointment for Cheryl Roberts for January 2nd, which she's already on, that date expires on January 2nd of 2028.
Make a motion to reappoint Cheryl Roberts onto the Housing Authority for January 2nd, 2023, expiring 1, 2, 28. So.
And Scott, thank you. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And then we'll catch all those eventually. With that, is there anything else for other? Hearing none, entertain a motion to adjourn.
So move.
And all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Time is 7:33. And thank you all for coming out tonight, and you'll hear a follow-up from Jordan for all the final paperwork. I have a call, this town in Plainfield Water Pollution Control Authority meeting to order for January 23rd, and the time is 7:34. Full call.
All right, okay. Scott, third?
Kevin Cunningham. Item C is to approve the minutes of the special WPCA meeting dated January 9th, 2023.
Two grades, and our new minutes.
Yep.
Kevin stated, I'm betting that's the new schedule.
Yep.
And then adjournment, I vote for motion. Just to tip Crystal, if it's just Kevin, I, that's what tipped me off, like Kevin's made a motion. So with those two corrections, I approve the meeting minutes of January 9th, 2023.
Okay. All right, I'll second that with the amendments. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And second. Jumping into public comments, does anybody here from the public have a comment? Hearing none, we'll go right into new business. Discuss and act on entering in a contract with Fussin' O'Neil to support the Clean Water Fund application proposed. You have item number one there for your review. Mrs. Fussin' O'Neil, who we've been working with to come up with a scope of services, and they are the premier group to work with. You see that when we asked them to come up with it, they came up with a number for us too. So the Clean Water Fund application for design, their assistance is request for $12,840.
Make a motion to approve the contract with Fussin' O'Neil, making Clean Water Fund application, $12,840.
Motion's been made.
Second.
And a second. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. We have in their budget, and I just wanted to put on the agenda as we approved it, but they do have in their budget, they were looking for a truck as part of their budget, and you'll see the list, and stapled are all the different options they came up with, and their choice is the top page. So on the top of the page, they have the 2016 Toyota Tacoma, and they put an offer in for $27,000.
Make a motion to approve the budget, the truck, $27,000.
Art, thank you.
Second.
Okay. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, the last one is an unfortunate issue, but discuss and approve the purchase of manhole covers and materials to fix work done on Route 12. You don't say any great job of paving over Route 12. The bad side is that they also paved over all the manholes. So we've been working with companies to give us some idea of how we're going to be able to fix that issue. Just so you, straight up front, whatever we're looking to purchase and put together for a request to buy the manhole covers and then replace and fix, we're going to then backfill a company that shouldn't have paved over to begin with. So we'll get a hold of that. So you'll see the emails coming back and forth between Prime Electric, there is a request, bottom line request from Steph, to put together for 25 manholes, would be So that was the request put forth, and I'm just making sure it was 25, that's what she had found. Finding the manholes takes a little time because they have to go over with a metal detector and figure out where they were. So the request here is for the, again, from their budget, which they will get reimbursed later, for the request for $37,375 for the manholes.
Do you know where, where from the budget actually come from?
I was told that they have a way to figure it out. I think if you look from your last page.
That's the budget.
Yeah. So I did ask.
I'll highlight it, sorry.
Yeah, I asked Steph, and I asked Kelly to come up with some numbers, and they said they were able to find it.
We can, it's a lot there.
Yep.
And we're putting into this, our, the contractor, who will hold on. Make a motion to approve the purchase of manhole covers and materials to fix, for Route 12.
For 37,000.
37,375.
Motion has been made, and a second. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Also, at this time, we can entertain a motion to adjourn.
So move. Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Time is 7:40. Thank you.